Recycling bid. Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Mr. Berry here tonight. He will present it for us. And I would remind the Commissioners that in our budget, you know, we told you we were going to be carrying over the $40,000 and then the $100,000 that we're putting in to take care of this starting to derive on the next fiscal year. Just a reminder. Mr. Berry, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. McGowan. Raton has struggled over the past year with the effects of some heavy rainfall events that occurred in the summer. As you know, we've met with FEMA and we did apply for some funding and we received some limited funding there. But one issue we're trying to address here is that we did see quite a bit of erosion in alleys. And so, under the proposal here, we would accomplish two things. But first of all, we're trying to create a base course type of material or surfacing material for alleys, place this material in the alleys and bring them back to a condition. And as you know, they're typically used for utility vehicles, especially solid waste. So we'd like to restore some of the condition of the alleys to make that easier on the equipment. So in addition to finding material for the alleys, we do have a pile of concrete rubble that's put on city-owned property on East Hurford. That comes from various construction projects over the years, typically removal of sidewalk, curb and gutter, concrete pavement. Some of that is reinforced concrete. And it's happened over the last 20 or 25 years. When we get some in the stockpile, we try to crush it down to approximately inch and a half size and use that as a construction material. So we have quite a bit of material out there now. In addition to the concrete, we have some concrete barrier which is chipped and not in good condition. We have some asphalt pavement that's out there. In total, we did an estimate of all the material out there and it exceeds 18,000 cubic yards. That's quite a bit of material and cost. So what we did, we asked for bids to crush about 10,000 cubic yards of that. So it would not completely clean up the property, but I think it would go a long way to cleaning it up. And of course, that is visible from I-25 and has an impact on people driving past Raton. So it would also accomplish the goal of cleaning up the property and recycling this concrete material. We did receive bids and opened on May 1st. As you can see, we got two bids, a little bid submitted by Coronado Wrecking and Salvage. And for the 10,000 yards, they've bid 125,000. That's a change. So we do recommend award to Coronado Wrecking and Salvage. And we would propose that the work start on or a little after July 1st, 2014. So I'll hold up there and take any questions.
Now, this, Mr. Berry, this bid is just for the crushing of the concrete, right?
Mayor, Commissioner Jacomo, this would strictly be to crush the material and leave it in a stockpile on the property. I would anticipate then that we could have city crews begin to load that up and work on an alley one at a time. We could also have, under a separate contract, have a contractor load and haul and blade that in the alleys. This would be strictly to stockpile it on the property.
Do you have an estimate as to how many alleys this will allow us to take care of?
I have not done that, Commissioner, because some of those, we have some reeled or gullies or headcuts in the alleys. And so, we would typically put down three to four inches of material, I think, in the alleys, but some may take more than that. But typically, we would try to do an assessment, find the worst alleys and work on those first. And we have used crushed concrete in the alleys in previous years, and it's pretty good material for that purpose.
Where is Coronado out of?
They're from Albuquerque. They did have our contract last time, which was about six years ago, I believe. They did crush a pier previously.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. McGowan, we're taking the $40,000 that was left from the transfer this fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the residual of the money will come from the street improvement fund for the gasoline tax?
No, ma'am, we're moving that from the solid waste.
You're moving it from solid waste?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And it is recommended that this be approved for Coronado. Mr. Berry?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the bid from Coronado Wrecking and Salvage Company for the amount of $125,313.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Coronado Wrecking and Salvage Company Incorporated to do the crushing for us of the recycled, to recycle the cement stockpile. Can I take a roll call vote?
Mayor Protim Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you. Our next item of business is to deliberate and act on the lodgers tax recommendation. They are recommending that $3,000 be paid out of the contingency fund for the promotion and support of the 36th Annual Raton Rodeo.
I make a motion that we accept that.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the lodgers tax advisory board to give $3,000 for the promotion and support of the 36th Annual Raton Rodeo, scheduled for June 20th and the 21st. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. At this point, we come to the City Managers' Report.
Mayor, Commissioners, you have before you an application from Carol Woodworth to be on the library board.
I would recommend that we appoint Carol Woodworth to the library board. I believe she's served on before.
I'm sure she has.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the application to the library board for Carol Woodworth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, New Mexico Department of Transportation will hold a public hearing on May 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Convention Center concerning the South interchange. And this is why we have changed the time of the commission meeting on the 27th to the 1 o'clock. So we're inviting everyone to be there and also remember the time change for the commission meeting. Next item, New Mexico Highland University. Several of us met with the president of New Mexico Highland University and some of his staff concerning the low enrollment of students here in Raton. Everyone needs to support our local branch of the New Mexico Highlands University. And please contact Vince Garcia at 445-0445 if you have any questions or suggestions. That is the correct number, isn't it, sir?
445-0445.
Yes. And so, it's very important for our community, which took us a long time, back many years ago when we started trying to get this here, when I was with the schools. And I think it's very important for our community to have this. And so, we need everyone to, whatever they can do, to support it. Also, any, like I say, questions or suggestions, please talk with Mr. Garcia. Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, the landfill closure will be this Friday, May the 16th, for CND material. After that, CND will have to go through one of the roll-off businesses. We are looking at having, talking with Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips. We're going to work out there, trying to fix two roll-offs for our people at the transfer station to discard furniture or anything that is not recyclable. We're trying to get everyone to use it. And we're also going to be working with someone, an agreement with someone that would, maybe we will have a CND out there that they would use, but they would be working through that business who would be either probably leasing the area from us so that they could have the business there. Otherwise, they'll, any CND will have to be, they'll have to be contacting the roll-off businesses. And there will no longer be any coupons issued for the material out there. And so, hopefully, and talking with Mr. Berry and all, we're hoping to get this set up as soon as possible for the roll-offs for this type of material for people to bring in out there. Next item is, I was asked at the last meeting about the Wells Fargo Building. And it so happened that the next day on Friday, Mr. Phillips informed me as of last Friday, they did start working on the new roof project for the Wells Fargo Building. So once, hopefully, that we get that put together and Michael Ann and I are working on the budget for this next year, that we will be putting money in that for the Wells Fargo Building to start taking care of the other things and try to finish a project at a time. And so that'd be on the woodwork, the painting, and hopefully, the ventilation of the Wells Fargo Building. And just like to remind everyone again that, Mayor, that you, as you have pointed out on different occasions, that's only one of five that's left in the United States. So we definitely want to make sure that we take care of it. Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, the El Portel. Mr. Florishum has the original signatures on the agreement for the release of the property to the city. He is working now with Mr. Harris on getting the deed. And one of the things, Mr. Berry, I reminded Ms. Michael Ann today to please remind me that once this is completed, that we are going to need to put a burn on that east side so that if we get the rain this summer that we hope that we're getting, that will keep it out of all the businesses from there. So if y'all will help remind the old man, once this is completed, that it is ours, then we will do that. Next item, the OSOs update. Chief Schmell and Mr. Chatterley relieved the concerns that we had, Mr. Locke, of the necessary requirements that he would need to furnish us with. Between the emails between Mr. Chatterley and Mr. Locke and all, it was all determined that they would start working on this for next year. They would, this year is kind of late to be going by the time that getting it all, everything that they would need to do. Would you like to add to that, Commissioner Chavis?
No beer, darn.
Okay.
But I talked to them also and they...
Yes, sir, I knew that you...
There was 21 days of downstate and most of the games had already been played. So there's no way that they could get it up and running for this year.
And so I just would remind the Commission and everything that what was lacking really was the insurance and the city being the additional insurer, also the security and what kind of security they had. What I didn't bring out before, and I talked to each of you after that, is that also the area that it would be dispensed, it must be at least 300 feet away from the school. And so, it would have to be roped off so that people would not get back over into that area within the 300 feet. So these are all of the things that you will need to remember as you look at it for the next year. Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, is the aquatic center rate increases. You have the information and recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to raise the rates from $3 to $4 for general admission, $5 on monthly, and $10 on quarterly passes, and $10 on the 20-visit punch pass. It is recommended that we accept their recommendation for these increases. I would, a lot of you, well, especially the new Commissioners, they had asked for this rate increase. They suggested it last year. We did not put it in place, but I think we just had to reach a solution.
I respectfully would like to tell the constituents that did some research on this, and I am on the Parks and Recreation Board, and I was present at the meeting when the board passed the rate increase. For example, Walsenburg charges $6 if you're from Walsenburg and $7 if you're not to use their facility. Trinidad has $6. So we're well under the norm for our area. And I believe that it's needed also, that this rate increase. And what they did is they made it across the board so that everybody pays the same. And we will need it to help fund the aquatic center. That's all I have to say.
You mean a motion? I'll make a motion to accept the rate increases for the aquatic center.
Could you speak to this? Should we wait just a minute till we get that motion and a second, and then I'll allow you to speak?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the rate increases to the Raton Aquatic Center as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board. Okay, Mrs. Poe?
Thank you. If I could share with you, this is Albuquerque's, right? I'm a retired teacher and I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board. And I was the only one that voted against raising the rate. Mr. Grant has worked very hard to get senior citizens to come to the pool. And I think that we want to increase the participation. That's the purpose. And if you look at West Mesa, which is the middle price, that's comparable to, we have the slide, and that's what they have. And I just, I think we should keep the rates the way they are. I don't think we should be higher than Albuquerque. We're a small town and we're losing people right and left. And I don't think we should continue to raise prices on those of us that are sticking around. And I did ask you to increase the quarter cent. We've got an eight cent when we built that, that we put in 1998 to start raising funds to build the aquatic center. Then we put a quarter cent tax on our citizens for recreation. So we've got 3/8 cents already going to recreation here. And we're talking about raising that another quarter cent. And then on top of that, raising the rates to those of us that do use the aquatic center. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Jimmy, you want to speak to this?
Anyway, I had a deal with Mr. McGowan with this senior swim that I got going. It's only one day a week, and it's only buck and a half, which is better than even if it's closed all day. And that's what we discussed when I first started this. And I'd like to know when this rate increase is going to take hold and if my deal with McGowan and Jared, if that's still going to hold until after school, that's out. And then after that, we had it on Sundays from 6 to 8 o'clock, still one day. So my question is, when are you planning on giving this rate increase?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
So that's the end of this month, right?
That's right.
So is that going to be the end of the senior swim? Or are we still going to do the Sundays?
What I have talked with Mr. Segada about Mr. Grant is that looking to see if there is something within the senior citizens that, for wellness program or physical fitness program or any type of health program, that would be able to support anyone that wanted to come from the senior citizens that could not afford the $4. And what I've also told Mr. Segada, I think that, secondly, we can put up a donation box at the senior citizens. I know grandmother and I would be happy to contribute for anyone that couldn't afford to pay the $4. I think that we're probably looking at, do you really think, Mr. Grant, we have people that cannot pay the $4 as we go forward? As we look at what we're doing there and what it is costing us for the aquatic center, we just have to look at all avenues. And we're not trying to keep anyone from going. That's why I'm saying I'm sure that we can come up with the money. I know that we had, I talked with people, retired teachers, that they're willing to help pay for students. And probably students are ones that we really need to encourage to start building a clientele to come to the center. And as I said at the last meeting, we'll never get enough people coming that is going to support it. That'll never happen. But I think that we can, I think that we can do things that if there are senior citizens that cannot afford the $4, there's not a doubt in my mind that we can come up with the money from people concerned, people, citizens in this community to see that they could still build.
I know my wife gave money last, for the kids last year, for some of the kids. So would you like to help my seniors? Because we have, what, today's 7:13? So we have, what, what?
Two more.
Two more?
Two more.
Should I tell them the number after that, or what?
Yes, sir. It'll be $4. But you can also tell them that we'll become, if they cannot, that they need to let Jared know. And Mr. Segada and I will work on getting contributions that it will, if they can't, we'll see to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you working with the people. What do we have, eight or nine coming from Simmerall?
Yeah.
That's great. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission on this issue? Is there any more discussion? Okay, take your roll call vote, please.
Hey, yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Segada?
Yes.
And Mayor Mann?
Yes. Motion passes. And as Mr. McGowan says, this will go into effect on Memorial Day, May 26th.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is our second public hearing, third meeting on the budget, City of Raton, 2014, 2015 budget, public hearing, input. We have incorporated from the last meeting the needs of the city to the best of our ability and knowledge, any other comments you have. And tonight, you have before you the latest pie charts. The interim budget will be approved at the May 27th, 1:00 p.m. meeting so that Michael Ann can submit it to Santa Fe by the June 2nd. The final budget will be in July. Any other changes that will need to be made will be done then. Mr. Michael Ann, again, has done an outstanding job and I thank you for it. Just to cover some of the changes, you have it before you. We budgeted $14,000 for fiscal agent fees under the new line item on page five. So, Mr. Segada, hopefully, the $6,200, Ms. Michael Ann will be talking with Duncan tomorrow at New Mexico COG, trying to get that worked out so that we can get the roof done. And we realize that $140,000 and the $15,000, that'll be $6,200 out of our budget to help take care of getting the senior citizen, the roof on, and the other things that will come, that will come with it. Also, what the mayor had brought up, the $32,000 from the Main Street Lodger's Tax, we put it in the executive area. We had a correction on the FAR Department Health Insurance, the retiree health care. Also, Ms. Michael Ann found out what our dues would be for the North Central COG, and that's under the Economic Development. We told you at the time, was not sure about the workman's comp, but we did receive the information that we will get the 5% discount. And so that decreased the worker's comp 36,729, but that was over all the departments. So that you need to know that. With the new contract with the OSOs, we increased that to the 5,600. And so, Ms. Michael Ann owned some salaries that we had, thinking that the hourly wage was going to be more when we did this. And so, we just kept the money within, using it on the aquatic center, the money saving. So we put that in, as you can see, there, equipment, maintenance, repair, and the other line items. Created a new line item. I want to thank Mr. Phillips, also thank Commissioner Chavis. I think he had seen this home recycling. And, Mr. Phillips, we ordered this, $37,000, of which $11,855 is what we will pay our match, and that will come out of the environment fund. And last but not least, thank you to Chief Matthews and Chief Espinoza. We will be placing code enforcement under the FAR Department. I'd like to thank all of the FAR Department for them stepping up. They now have the planning and zoning and the code enforcement also. And so, that is, you will see as I go down to the bottom, the savings then that we had from this is why now that we're showing $26,000 in revenue over expenses, which we're definitely going to need. So we moved, we had nearly $41,000 in that line item. We moved 12,500 over plus taxes, PERA, et cetera. So now then, we have come up with $4,625,800 in revenue, $4,533,300 in expenses. Then you put the transfers out, the transfers in, and so we have this much more transferred out, but we have then the $26,124 revenue over the others. These are all the changes that the Commission had requested, plus the things then that we found, plus the change that we made in the code enforcement. So this is what we'll be putting, Ms. Michael Ann will be putting together. So this is what we'll be putting, Ms. Michael Ann will be putting together the interim budget that we will be presenting to you then on the twenty-seventh. And then any other changes will happen later, if meet the, for the final budget then in July, after we have finished out the year. So if you have any comments, suggestions, or questions, if not, please let us know. I think we've tried to incorporate everything that has been suggested and requested, and still take care of our people. If not, then last item, recognition, appreciation, and information. I'd like to thank Leslie Blakeney and everyone who participated and attended the health fair, also Ron Ramirez and the SL Start New Mexico Works, and everyone that participated and attended the job fair, also Rico and Leonard for setting it up. I'd like to thank Pat and David from the Public Works, Chief Sisneros and all of his people from the Police Department, Chief Matthews and Espinoza for helping Blaine and Honda for the poker run, and the Cinco de Mayo helping set all of that up. And a special thank you to Main Street for sponsoring Cinco de Mayo. Appreciate Mayor Matt and everyone that attended and her remarks at the VA ribbon cutting. Now I'd like to reiterate, I adhere, Mayor, thanking everyone for coming out and supporting Save the Chief. Last item I have, Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Scott Berry and his appointment as Senate Manager beginning in September. He will be a valuable asset, leading an already excellent group of leaders in our various departments of City Hall and a Commission that cares about Raton and its citizens. So I do congratulate him. I would say, Mr. Berry, that you owe me big time, because following me, I will make you look really good. That's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, we're considering this a public hearing on the budget, and I neglected to ask if anyone had any input that they would like to address the Commission.
I apologize also, Mayor.
On the budget? Mr. Jenkins?
I just have a question at this time. I know you mentioned that the funds for the North Central COG dues would be placed under Economic Development. I wondered what additional monies are being set aside for Economic Development?
We have twenty percent of an individual budgeted in Economic Development, Mr. Jenkins.
And I thought we did concrete that earlier.
And so right now, that is just an estimate of a salary, and we put twenty percent in there.
Page twenty-seven.
I'd just like to say that it's the opinion of Raton that we need to have a concerted effort on behalf of the city in terms of economic development, and we would ask the Commission to take a look at the proposal we have made to act as the economic development agent for the city and consider how that might benefit our economic development efforts.
Thank you. Next item we're looking at, Michael.
Page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Economic Development.
We've also budgeted training and travel.
Yes, ma'am.
And meetings, and dues and subscriptions also under that particular fund. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission concerning the budget? Is there any other business to come before this Commission?
Under appreciation, I'd like to give the kudos to Michael Ann. The times that we've come in here and asked her for what's going on with different line items and everything, she's been professional and great, and so I just want to thank her publicly for the help that she's done for us new Commissioners.
Like I said, Commissioner, again, I really appreciate all that she does, and I really appreciate the job for us.
Well, she's currently doing two jobs, right? The legislature and filling in for maternal city clerk, is that incorrect?
All of our stuff.
Everybody.
Mr. Ring, I'd also like you to show some appreciation to Rico and Leonard, as yesterday morning was the third time they've had to start the furnace at the senior center, so.
Yes, I should have mentioned that myself, yes.
Appreciate it.
Any other business? Hearing none, being adjourned.